I knew that, I was just checking you. I don't care. Never got glasses. I like wearing hers, I feel, I feel so thin.
At least you have bricks for clothing.
Easy, easy. See if I remember how to do this. We will now call to order the regular scheduled meeting of Hot Cove City Council to order on this day. Today is January 8th, 2019 at 6:31 PM. All council members are here and present except for Mr. Mark Collins. Would anyone like to do the invitation? Anybody out there would like to do the invitation, you're more than welcome. I just ask, it's been awhile since I've done this, you'll have to forgive me. I fight with my faith a little too much. So I guess I will do the invitation. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in a help, help for the city, help for the citizens, and help for this council. We need your guidance, we need you to put your hand upon our shoulder and guide us the right direction in a way that you feel that we should be going. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. If you will stand and remove your caps please. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now before we get to the consent agenda, there's a few things that I would like to say that y'all indulge me for a few minutes. I know you didn't come up here to hear me Bible, but I apologize, but I think there's a few things that I need to say. Everybody knows there's new faces in town. In my personal opinion, this is just me personally. I think they have an ulterior motive, they're just trying to feed the hungry. But that's me. If you want to feed the hungry, you want to give clothing, the city council would not be like objective to it. But when you hold signs, what was up there, all you gotta do is say, hey, I got food. I'm fine with it. I would've come up here and opened City Hall. I'd've sat out there and helped him. I will help you, but I'm not going to, or I can't in good faith or good conscience sit there and let something like that just continue to ruin a reputation that's already been damaged by the past. And it is the past. We have to look at the future. Is it right? Well, we'll see. Maureen, we'll see. But we have to, we have to make sure that we do the things that are right. Ordinances are stupid, they really are. Do you know why we have city ordinances? Because the federal government and state government won't do their job. So we have to protect the people and citizens, everybody. Do you know that if somebody breaks in my house and my dog bites them, they can sue me? Why? Because our state and federal government won't do their job. Somebody breaks in my house, if I shoot them and they don't have a gun, I get sued for wrongful death, am I supposed to turn the lights on, hey, you got a gun, you got a knife? I'm sorry, but I, my family is important to me. I will stand between that guy, or girl, or whoever, and my family. If I had to go to prison for shooting someone for breaking into my house and I don't know what their motive is, then sue me. But that's why we have ordinances. The ordinance about food. If we don't protect ourselves and the city, who's going to? The city ordinance is there because, see, I'm trying to make sure, and you'll have to bear with me, I'm nervous as crap, I apologize. I think you can hear my voice. But the ordinance is there because if we just allow people come up here and get food, what if you get sick? What if something happens to your child because they ate something that was tainted? I'm not saying they did, nor would I ever say that. But if they got sick and they don't have a permit, the city is liable for it. Because the government won't do it for us, so we have to make or, sorry, the council has to make ordinance to try their best to protect the people, that's all it is. All that they had to do was come up here and get a permit. There was gonna be a fee, never was going to be, nor would there ever be one to give out food, clothing, anything that is something that the people asked for, want or need. There were some people that come in here a while back and asked for an ordinance change. And I'm just gonna throw this one out there just to give you a little example. They wanted to know if we could, if the council could amend an ordinance about having more than two animals in their yard. Fine, we're not trying to suppress people from having seven dogs. What we have to look at, the council, is what about your neighbor? What about your neighbor, they also have rights. Do you really want to be the guy that goes to bed at seven o'clock at night, gotta get up at two in the morning and you got your neighbor with seven dogs? And a squirrel runs up a tree, what are them seven dogs gonna do? They're dogs. I love dogs. But I, we have to look at your neighbor also, not just you. We're not trying to suppress nobody, we're not sitting there saying, hey, no, because we said so. It's, we have to look at the big picture. I don't want to be the guy next door that's trying to sleep and having seven dogs bark out all night long and I'm trying to get over to work in the morning. It's not that, we have to look at everything. A woman goes into McDonald's and gets a cup of coffee, sets it up on her dash and gets the gas, and that coffee spills all over her. She sued McDonald's because they didn't have a sign in the window that said, "Hot Coffee." Really? That's where this world is coming to. Man bottle Winnebago. He set cruise control, got up out of that seat while the vehicle was moving, went in the back, got in his icebox and got him a soda pop or water, and the Winnebago went off the road and he sued them. And won them. Because he didn't, they had, Winnebago did not put on there, this is not autopilot. That's the reason city ordinances are there, is try to protect, not to suppress, try to protect not just the city council, not just you, but everybody. They're trying, the city council's not perfect, I promise you, we are human just like everybody else. None of us are God. He's the only person, or not even he, that entity is the only perfect thing in this universe, in my opinion, and I'm not going religion. If there's certain things that you don't like about what the city is, it's posted out there seventy-two hours before this council adjourns. Well, seventy-two and a half. Before the council convenes, if there's something you see on there that you may not like but you can't get to the meeting, put it in an envelope and you pay your sewer bill, put it on, hey, I don't like this, what can we do? Give the city council something to go by. We would love to hear from y'all, we really would. We would love to hear that you put an envelope in there, or when you come up to pay your sewer bill, give it to the ladies up front, here, this is what I think, if you can't make it to the meeting. Let the council know how you feel so we can sit there and go, hey, they, they can make an executive decision based on what their feedback is. When you have nobody in here telling us which direction to go, we have to do the best we can. And that's exactly what we're doing. As far as putting sewer water down the creeks, that's already been disproven. There's a lot of things goes on that, I'm one of the worst. I'll, I'll get up in the morning, I'll watch TV and I see this woman got murdered. Well, the husband is suspect, my first impression, dang, he's guilty. And that's just a human mind, because the way it's presented, once it's presented, the perception is there and how do you get out of it? Well, good luck with that, if you're the guy that was convicted of murder, what are they gonna do? You wanna take him to another city, another state, what's all over the news? The perception is there. There's lots of things that we could do better, but we can't do it without your help. Like I said, just put it in a note. Slip in, if you work nights, slip it in the night box. Just gonna ask you, don't seal it. If you want it to address to one of the, if you don't even know who your council person is, just put on there, council member, put on there, mayor, I don't care. Don't seal it. I'm gonna instruct the ladies to be sealed, don't open it, don't need a spider crawling out and biting you. If it's sealed, it's going straight in the trash. And I hate to say that because I love these ladies. I don't want none of them getting hurt. So I'm gonna do my best to protect them, just don't seal it. Let them be able to see that when they come in the morning, oh, this is to the mayor, this is to council member Ms. Reeves, this is to council member whoever. Stop it, let us help you when we can if you don't give us feedback. And I know I'm rattling on and I do apologize, but the last thing I want to talk about is the threatening phone calls. How many of you out there would love to have your mother answer a phone call and know that you are the one on the other end going, yeah, how you lack your body parts? Really? Or if your wife worked at a place and it was, I hope you can sleep with one eye open. Or if it was your daughter that had to answer the phone and say, or worried because they were saying, they were threatening you with bodily harm? Really? Really? That's what we're coming to? If you're mad at the city, write a letter. We will listen to it, we will write it. But these ladies are only doing their job, they're not the ones up here making the rules, that's us. You wanna be mad, be mad at me. I'll take it. But I'm here to tell you, I love these women, there's nothing I wouldn't do for them. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm gonna stand up for every one of you. And I'm gonna let you know we love you. Have to deal with this. I'm really sorry, I wish I could do more. I wish I could stand up here and answer them phone calls for you. And I wouldn't be muddily to them, I would say thank you, I appreciate your comments, but why did these women have to deal with that? If that was my wife, my mother, or my daughter, I'll leave that alone, 'cause I'm not gonna sit here and make threats, but it would make me angry, and I hope it would make you angry. I'm not telling them they don't have the First Amendment right to call up here and, and argue and gripe and complain. They do, but let's keep it civil. Please, let's keep it civil. We're all human. This lady makes mistakes, these two ladies make mistakes. If any of you, anybody in this room doesn't make mistakes, please stand up. I would love to see it that you do not make mistakes. I get in the mornings sometimes, I'm gonna turn my headlights on, I mean, that's obvious. Going down a dirt road and there's no headlights. Don't think we're not perfect, because we're not. We are nowhere near perfect. We would like help. And the only way we can get that is from, you, tell us what you think. There's no one that's out there you don't like? You know how thick the ordinance book is? Oh, sorry, can I borrow your finger? If there's something you don't like, please let us know. We're not out to try to hurt no one. We're trying to make it better, but we're on a limited, everything. Everything that we do is limited. And if you don't believe me, ask anybody in this town. And I do apologize for rattling on, but I appreciate your time, too. And we will get to regular business now.
I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate y'all, I appreciate y'all, I appreciate it. I really appreciate y'all for coming up here, I really do. You know, this is the biggest audience since I've been here that I've ever seen. And it took this to do it? It took this. But there is one thing, I will, I will say this before, I know I already said I wouldn't, but I want to. There is one thing that I think this should have taught everybody. And I'm not gonna bash the police officer, I won't. But it taught us that we need more training, it really does. The First Amendment auditors, not, I don't think that's what this was, it was just somebody out trying to get something and he did. The second one will be next, so we gotta be prepared. We gotta make sure our officers, our city council, everybody is understandable of what you can and cannot do. The Third Amendment, I can't wait till the Fifth Amendment guys get here. You got the right to remain silent. That's the one I'm waiting. Can we skip first and second, go straight to fifth? But that has really taught all of us a valuable lesson, that we don't know the laws. So that much I will applaud him for. Let us know what that law is, because we're not perfect. But we are training. We are, we're doing the best we can by training the officers to make sure that they do know what they can and can't do. There are certain things in academy I'm sure they don't teach you, I don't know, I never went, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not even a politician. I got thrown into this one. But I'm enjoying it, 'cause I enjoy the people, I enjoy the city. And I said I wasn't gonna continue, but okay, we're done. Okay, where were we? That's, that's where I was headed. Item five, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and self-explanatory, self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. Item A, approve paying the bills for December 2018.
We make a motion that we approve paying the bills for December 2018.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve paying the bills for December 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Then the motion passes. Item six, public comments. Before I ask this person to stand up, I'm gonna ask them, do they wish their name to be placed all over the internet before I say their name?
Might he a little want to sign up for a public comment?
Yes ma'am, do you mind me saying your name? Or would you like to come up here and point that this is you? You tell me, we don't, if, we want y'all to be able to speak, but not have your name plastered all over the place, so if you want to say your name, or you want me to?
You can say my first name.
Ma'am?
My first name, please.
Well then, let me ask you, can you come up here and just point and say this is you?
Nikki?
Well, I'm, I'm asking you to come up here and say that.
I literally.
So I don't have to say your last name. Would you confirm that this is you, please ma'am?
Yes, that's me.
Nikki, okay. Ms. Nikki, you can stand where you want, I apologize, we don't have a podium. If you'd like to stand back there, right here, the floor is yours.
Here.
The floor is yours.
This is awkward. Um, so I, a couple things. I haven't, this is my very first council meeting, and I would like to thank you guys for passing that whole rooster, you know, ordinance. Every winter, you know, that thing would get to go and at like four AM when a car drove by. And at wintertime, like I knew it was gonna come, and it all night, I'm a small child, and it woke us up all the time, so I was very excited when our neighbors over here no longer had a dozen roosters. Well, that brings that I do have a small child, I was one of the people that called in about the sign. I was driving with my five-year-old, there's not a whole, a whole lot of ways into this city or out of this city. My five-year-old, we just started kindergarten, sounding out words and letters. And this particular sign had a big red bold F-word. So that's the first thing that jumps out, so my five-year-old starts sounding out this big bold letter, and mom, what's, what's that say? So it, it was, it was very disturbing to me. I know our community, I haven't let that here long, we bought in, we bought a cash house here. Not really knowing what to expect, we got in and quickly realized that our, that the way that people perceive Hot Cove is not, is not good. You know, like you don't want to raise a baby here, this is not where you want to be, you know, there's so many drugs here, and I said, whoa, wait a minute, you know, what are we, what are we doing? But since I've been here, the city, the, the police, Rhonda, you know, I have all, I think, well, I think you came like the first day we moved in and kind of welcomed us to the community, and we've had nothing but positive experiences. We've never had anything disappear, or you know, any, any drugs thrown in the window, or whatever the case may be. So as we were exiting the, the, one of the ways into the, the community, my kid's sounding out this word, I did, I called, because it's, A, I don't want our community to continue to suffer and be perceived as a place that you don't want to live, like it's embarrassing to me sometimes when we're at work or out and, where do you live, Quenland? Oh, where do you live, Hot Cove? Oh. Like I, and I think that the sign furthered that impression of, of our Hot Cove, of being a resident, and we do have to live here, and we do have to live with, you know, how it's perceived. Like that, that is not the perception that I would like to, to give out. And I would not like to teach the F-word to my five-year-old. Um, I, they didn't answer when I called, though, when we came back, I know, but there was a little exchange, and it's very disheartening to hear that the ladies up here are getting death threats and, you know, having, you know, the city closed down and all this stuff, when they're, they're just simply trying to better the community, and I get it, there are two different ways to better a community, one has one opinion, one has another. I think we need to join forces, and I think this is the ideal opportunity to do that. You know, we're on two different sides of the fences, is it done correctly in my belief? No, it wasn't done correctly. But here we are, and, and you know, moving forward, I would like to say, like, I'm, I, this is my first meeting, you know, I wouldn't, I haven't been contributing, I haven't been up here, I haven't been asking, you know, for things, so I'm here now, I'm a vested member, and I just want to say that you guys are, are doing a fantastic job, you know. I think it was a target attack on our, on our community, we have limited resources, limited availability, and we're easy targets. If this was happening in Frisco or Dallas, like would it be, you know, as big of an ordeal it is? Like, no, but we're wasting our, we don't have the resources, we don't have the time, and we don't have the community members involved. And here we are, wasting resources, time, and things of that nature, when there are other things that I personally would like to see our resources go into. So I'm here, I'm committed to coming in and you too, you know, this, that, whatever. Let's unite, let's join forces and, you know, just move forward, like let's, let's see what we can make happen together, but not, not a division, like there's enough division going on in the world, like the last thing we need is community leadership.
Thank you. More than I like to address public comments, but I think that one needs to be. We can't? Okay, never mind that, sorry. Okay, we will move on to item seven, old business. We have no old business. Item eight, new business. Item, or, eight, item A, discuss, consider on wastewater treatment plant update. Yes, if you don't mind, please. Our wastewater manager is not here tonight. Jordan Elder, so I will read his communication to us with regard to the state of our water plant, wastewater plant. City of Hot Cove Council. Over the last few weeks, we've been dealing with what appears to be oil grease or possibly gasoline in the plant. When this occurred, it caused what we call a die-off of the plant. When that happens, the plant either can't be reseeded, or it can't be jump-started by other means. After many, many attempts to get the plant jump-started again, we were able to jump-start it organically. Therefore, we did have to reseed the plant. It took two loads and separate occasions to get the plant to where it is today. The plant now looks great again, and we are running very well. I will provide you with lab reports and any of the documentation you may want at your earliest convenience. I wanted to extend the offer of a plant tour to any other council members that would be interested, just let me know, and I'll make sure I am available. Thank you so much for your time, if you have any questions, refer to my card and give me a call anytime. Thank you, have a blessed day. Jordan Elder has been doing a fantastic job with our wastewater plant management. We had not received reports, I've been on the council, I think, longer than anybody up here, right? You're the dinosaur.
And still roaming the earth.
Still roaming the earth, one day you'll turn to oil. But not going to the wastewater plant. Okay, so I've been up here, I'm the most senior on the council, and we have not had a wastewater plant report. Since Mr. Elder has joined us and we have contracted with that company, we have received a report every month. Every month, with explanation as to the numbers and what they exist on. This has been a great benefit to us, it's been a great benefit to the city and its constituents. And absentia, I want to thank Mr. Elder for his participation and his assistance in managing our systems. Yeah. Counsel, anybody?
Yes, that's true.
I agree.
In addition to the email that Mr. Elder sent, he, he's made aware that someone dumped gasoline around the Amy lift station. From all the terminations, it has not at this time infiltrated the plant. The test results this morning did not show a residual of that, which we do not want that to happen again, but, but he did test this morning.
Item B, discuss, consider, and act on approving tax reset deed number 86716. Oh, yeah, thank you. Everything's strong enough for me. All right, the total amount is? Council meeting? I'm sorry, I'm still trying to discuss. Sir? Is there any discussion on this matter by the council?
I move we, we approve tax reset deed 86716.
We have a motion to act on approving tax reset deed 87, eight, six, seven, one, six. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Then the motion passes to approve tax reset deed number 86716. We have no executive session, we will move on to announcements, is there any announcements? Counsel? No, executive session. Am I missing? Okay, I was gonna say, I didn't see nothing. Counsel, have any announcements? Anybody out there would like to have any announcements, they would like to?
I, I'd like to say anything real quick.
Yes, sir.
This is the largest turnout for a city council meeting we've ever had in, in my tenure on the council. And I want to thank everybody for coming in. I hope that, and it is, it is the hope of the entire council, that, that all of you continue to participate in the governing of your community. And I want to thank all of you for being here.
United we stand, united we fall.
Yes, ma'am. Any more announcements? Then we will move to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor of adjourn and say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Then we will now adjoint, adjourn the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Hot Cove, January 8th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. January eighth, two thousand nineteen at seven P M. Adjourn.